Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce Peter Pahala, Commander of the Shope Davie American Legion, Post 6082, Peckville, PA. Peter is a Vietnam veteran and served the United States Air Force from 1966 to 1969 with the rank of E2. I'd like to thank you for your service. Step up to the podium. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please stand and face the flag of our country? And we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance at this point. Present arms for any veteran in the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Can you please have a moment of silence for all those that lost their lives in these two last mass shootings? Please keep their family and friends and everyone that they meant something to and our thoughts and prayers in the coming days. It's a very scary time and I just hope that it would stop and just people could just care for each other instead of destroy one another. Just a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, September 4, 2019, Board of Commissioners meeting toward 10:00 a.m., Commissioners Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes passed meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Notaryanni.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Thank you. Proclamation presentations. Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, 19-0220. Do we have someone here from the... Would you like to come up to the podium? Let's talk about what you have going on and what's going on Saturday and what it means to the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Okay, Saturday, we have our annual Suicide Prevention and Remembrance Walk at the courthouse. This is our sixth year. Last year, we've had 47 identified suicides in Lackawanna County. And I say identified because those... That data is always underreported. And unfortunately, this year, we have a number of new teams. One is for a 14-year-old boy that died last year. I've recently come to the Commissioners' Work Group Meeting asking for a Lackawanna County Task Force. Our organization is Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative. We're a very small group of people and we do what we can in September to help participate in the Suicide Prevention Month. We've given a number of books to 11 libraries in Lackawanna, Wayne, and Luzerne Counties on bereavement, helping people who've lost someone to suicide. We are always available for free trainings and a big part of that is post prevention, unfortunately. And so that's what we have going on to help celebrate Pennsylvania's Suicide Prevention Month.
The Saturday event, what time? Is there registration or is it just like you just...
You could registra... Register before the walk, but you don't have to. You could register at the time of the walk. It starts at 9:00. The walk itself starts at 10:00.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, thank you for coming in to address this topic. I know it's difficult for... To talk about, but one of the things that, you know, when I was looking at your statistics and I talked about it with you in the meeting is that the spring and summer months seem to be a higher rate of suicide than the holidays, which I always thought the holidays were...
Unfortunately, no one knows the why. And it's not just one reason for suicide, but it does seem to happen nationally even, mostly in the spring.
Yeah. Well, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
You know, I don't know why. That's just an interesting thing that...
A lot of people think it's around the holidays, but it's not.
Yeah, I was always under the impression that it was around the holidays.
There's a number of theories, but there's no certainty on why it happens in the spring sometimes. And we know suicide is the result of a medical complication in the brain, but we don't know what causes some people to have that and what causes other people to get through whatever they're going through without that. And there is a theory that your brain is more inflamed, I guess, inflammation, just like allergies in the spring. And suicide, most of the time, not all the time, but most of the time, it's an impulsive act, although some people plan their deaths months in advance and they kind of fight that feeling, fight that urge, and then something happens and they attempt and sometimes succeed. Yeah.
Thank you for your work. I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Notaryanni?
Just thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
It's a... The devastation they leave on their families behind them is what's so sad also, not just to themselves.
And this little 14-year-old, all his co-students, his peers.
Peers, his family. You know, it's a permanent solution to a temporary problem and it just isn't, you know, it's... If there's a way to attempt to stop it, it certainly would be worth the effort.
Well, awareness is the start of it.
Yes, it is.
So, thank you.
Great job and thank you.
Thank you.
It takes the heart out of a family.
Absolutely. It changes it.
I've dealt with it. I understand and it's, you know, it's... Someone can be in an accident, somebody can be murdered. It's horrible to say, someone could die from a disease, but with suicide, it's just so...
Yeah.
You know, it's that, you know, everybody questions, "Why didn't anybody notice?"
Why, yes.
You know, and I'd like to say to the viewing audience, "Look for signs." Sometimes there isn't signs. You know that.
You're absolutely right.
But there is signs, you know what I mean? See if someone's not doing their usual, you know, their usual stuff.
Yes.
You mean if they're not... If they're unhappy, you know, try to get to the root of something, you know what I mean?
And don't be afraid to ask someone if you're concerned about them. Don't be afraid. You're not going to put it in their head. Don't be afraid to say, "I'm worried about you. Have you ever thought of ending your life?"
It's really, really scary and like you said, for, you know, any family, you know, to go through it, you know what I mean? It's outrageous. It's horrible. And, you know, I mean, it's like any other loss, but it's just so different because everybody blames themselves because, you know, I mean, everybody thinks the last time they spoke to that individual and they say, "Well, what did I say or what didn't I say or what I should have said?" Or you just didn't even notice, so how would you know?
And we're just... We're just really talking about it, so I appreciate this. And the more we talk about it, hopefully, the more people will ask for help, even people who've lost someone to suicide, their friends, their coworkers, they don't know what to say, so frequently, they say nothing, which is very hurtful. And so, please, keep that in mind if you know someone who's lost someone to suicide, especially this month. Say, "You know, I know that this is Suicide Prevention Month and I just want to tell you that I was thinking of you."
And it's like a lot of families that look at it like it's, you know what I mean? It's... They just don't want it to be out there.
Yeah.
You know, and the truth of the matter is, you know, I mean, there's a lot of families that have dealt with it within our county.
Yes.
So, you know what I mean? There's a lot of hurt out there.
Yes.
So, but I would like to thank you for everything you do. And so, walk starts at 9:00 a.m., Lackawanna County Courthouse. What time should everybody start getting there? Around 8:30-ish quarter?
9:00 is fine.
9:00?
We have some speakers. This year, we have Joe Dombrosky, who's Scranton policeman. He's part of the Community Intervention Team, very committed member, and he lost his stepson to suicide two years ago. And so, he's going to talk about his heartbreak of being able to help others and have to deal with it himself.
Because that, I mean, it's... You have to have a coping mechanism, you know? Everybody's got to... The families got to rely on each other or friends or whoever.
Absolutely.
But Kathy, thank you. We have a proclamation. Whereas suicide is the leading cause of death in the United States and in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, one person dies by suicide, I didn't realize this, every four hours, making the second-leading cause of death for the ages 15 to 34, and the fourth-leading cause of death in ages 35 to 54. Listen, anybody out there that's, you know, I mean, it's scary. Wake... Go to bed. Don't hurt yourself. You know, there's always another day.
Yes.
The next day could be so much better than the day that you had just been through. And I think, that's why I think a lot of people gotta say, "Please, I gotta stop right now." Because if no one else understands that you're going to do this, you're the only one that could stop it yourself.
Absolutely.
Get... Go to sleep and wake up the next day. And, you know, I mean, the whole day might be a whole different, better place to be.
And I'd like to thank you for your service and also acknowledge the number of veterans we lose also to suicide.
Whereas nearly 5 million people in the United States have lost their lives, one to suicide, and each member of our community is valued and irreplaceable. And taking... Talking openly about the stress and psychological health building trust reduces the barriers and the cares and enables early intervention and local statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. And it's true, like you said, it's something that we should all talk about.
Yes.
And if you feel that there's a loved one that may be on the edge or just something maybe just seemed different about them, ask them. See, "Is everything okay? Can I help you? Can I be there? Do you need someone to talk to? Just be there." That's what this is about. Whereas Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative is committed to organization... Organizing... Or does it... Is that a... Organizing a run entirely by volunteer and survivors who believe suicide can be defeated. A reinforcement of their dedication to the annual gathering for Share the Journey Walk, bringing together smiles coworkers, neighbors, and students who have been affected by the terrible tragedy, support the journey of healing. Now, therefore, whereas the mission for Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative is to prevent suicide in our community through advocacy, collaboration, and education, all funds raised in Northeast are used for programs, clinical training, management skills, community education on suicide prevention, support for healing and grief activities for survivors. Now, therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Notaryanni, Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, hereby acknowledge and proclaim September 4, 2019, I mean, behalf of our 214,000 citizens, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And to the teenagers that are out there that might have a relationship or something goes wrong, please, don't ever hurt yourself. Your life is too short. You have one life to live. You need to live on. Your family needs you and everyone cares for you. And this goes for anyone who may be contemplating suicide. There's always a better day coming up. Please, just hang on and be there for your family, because when you leave your family, you leave a terrible void.
Absolutely. I'd just like to add too that the state this year has started a State Suicide Prevention Task Force, the first of its kind, and they are going to be having listening sessions around the state. So, I'm hoping that Northeast PA, I hope it's Lackawanna County that hosts that listening session.
If we could be part of it, you let us know.
I will.
What we have to do will help out.
I will.
Because this is a horrible tragedy and I don't think any of the Board of Commissioners really realized how many people in every four hours. That's really concerning.
Yeah.
I didn't know we didn't have a task force here.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it either.
Yeah. We're the only one in northeastern PA that doesn't have a task force. Wayne County has an active task force. Luzerne, Susquehanna has a co-funded coordinator through Lackawanna-Susquehanna Mental Health, but Lackawanna doesn't have anything.
If there's any way that the Board of Commissioners could help you through committee relations or whatever we can do.
Thank you.
We're here to try to keep all of our citizens alive and well.
Thank you very much. And I will mention that at the walk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like to come forward?
Thanks, Trace.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
No, no problem. No, no, no. I understand. It's a horrible thing to do.
Take a step over this way. Perfect. All right, here we go. Perfect. Everybody look at the camera, smile. We'll take a couple of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know.
Thanks, Trace.
Let us know. Okay.
Thank you.
So, every... Anyone in the viewing audience that would like to come out to the walk, it's this coming Saturday, September 6, 9:00 a.m. at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. Come on out. Okay, 19-0221, Commissioner Cummings?
We have a vintage kitchen here today as our Small Business Spotlight. And who's here?
Hi, I'm Sandy Graham and I own Vintage Kitchen.
Thanks for coming in. Tell us a little bit about your business.
Well, we're having our grand opening this Friday, during First Friday. We are cooking and lifestyle classes, so we do cooking classes, children, adults alike. We have different themes, different ingredients. It varies every month. We do birthday parties and there's a variety of themes for children, but we also do private parties, corporate events, adult birthday parties, whatever the occasion, we handle that. There's also some sewing classes mostly. We do classes called a creative cafe, which is kind of a little crafting or some kind of art with some food with... That's more of a demonstration. Most of our classes, the majority of our classes are all hands-on.
Nice.
And we were in Clark Summit for three years and are just making the move to downtown Scranton on Linden Street.
We're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Congratulations. And what made you start this business? Is this something that you're...
It was something I thought about for years and years and years and finally, sometimes you have that life moment, you say, "Now's the time to do it." And I did it. Not looking back now.
This was the moment.
It's great. It was the moment. It happened and...
Well, congratulations.
No regrets. Thank you.
We're proud to have you here and thank you so much for being an inspiration to others. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Notaryanni?
What are some of the types of things you cook? I'm very interested in eating.
Oh. We have all kinds. So, we do some things like we'll do vegeta... Vegetarian or vegan classes or even sometimes just meatless classes, but we do classes. One of the most popular... Pasta is always a popular class. So, that's popular. Sometimes we have a class called Bourbon and Honey and all the foods are made with bourbon and honey. That's quite popular too. But you name it, we try it. Sometimes it's the people, our customers, who call up and say, "Hey, can you do such and such?" And they fuel the idea. So, it's kind of what the public wants, but kind of things that I find, particularly food trends. So, I pay attention to that. But you're learning a lot of classic skills, but to keep it trendy, to keep it new and fresh, the classes rotate around.
This time of year, with the farmers market open, it's got to be wonderful.
That's... It's very good. And as we get to the holidays, people want to learn to make things like homemade gnocchi, homemade ravioli, so we fill those classes too.
Sandy, so you're coming... You're down in downtown Scranton. You're at 317 Linden Street.
Yes.
What's the phone number, website?
The website is www.vintagekitchencookingclasses.com. The schedule's up there. There's also a blog that runs up there, so sometimes there's some cooking techniques or recipes that go with that. And the phone number is 570-851-8521.
I think this is great. So, you do... What... This is really, a lot of it's like, which regular, necessary skills, like cooking?
Yeah.
Yeah, first...
And really, the kids are super interested. So, the trend of the cooking shows that are for kids right now have the kids interested. One of the things I hear all the time and it happens all the time. I might step away a little bit. The kids are eating what they made. I might be, you know, tidying up a bit and you always hear kids say, "Boy, food tastes better when you make it."
Mm-hmm.
Yes. That's it. We did our job. We also have... We have two 4H groups that run out of Vintage Kitchen that we host there, so they're getting more skills also. We're trying to spread it around to the kids.
It's good because, you know what I mean, like, one, if you try to save money and you, I mean, you don't have a lot of money in your pocket, it's cheaper to make your own food at home and it's family. You know, you can involve everybody in the family in preparation when you're making something for dinner.
Yeah.
You really can. And I think that our country's got away from the old days where everybody sat around a kitchen table at night.
That's for sure.
And, you know, like today, like I see with my kids, if we sit down to eat, my wife will tell them to put their phones away. You know what I mean? Like, we didn't have that world 30, 40 years ago. It wasn't like that.
No, you didn't answer the phone, would it?
Or go... Yeah. And there was only one phone in the house. But I remember like going to Grandma's, like every Sunday, you go to Grandma's house and she'd have the driest roast beef there ever was, but we would all be there. You know, I mean, that was part of that Sunday. It was the way it was. But my mom cooked every day, you know what I mean? We would... I'm not going to say there was... I had six siblings and my mom and dad sort of gave us, but sometimes we didn't all eat together, but like there would be at least three or four of us at a time usually. So, like, you know, I mean, we were together all the time. And I think it really mattered because I think it's something that I think our country's getting away from and I think it's something our families should do. Try to eat together at least two, three times a week or more if you're able to. You know, because you could really... You could talk about a lot of different things. You're enjoying a meal, you know what I mean? It's an actual hour and some minutes, you know, if you sit down, relax and eat and talk and enjoy each other's company.
And the research will say that at least two meals a week, that cusp is two meals a week, will help keep teenagers out of trouble. And that's research-based. And really, two meals, two out of seven days, you know, if you do two dinners, is that cusp for quality time, preferably more. But when a few generations have gotten away from cooking, so we did see that slump in the family meals. So, I think with the interest that the kids have and the kids that come in, I think we're going to see it back. I think the kids are going to lead us in this charge, which is awesome. I like when kids take the lead.
I think it's great. Here he is. And I think it, like you said, it's something... And it makes you self-sufficient. You should be able to know how to cook for yourself if you have to.
Yes.
And, you know, I mean, you shouldn't have to rely on anybody else, but just the family just sitting it on the table, I think that's what means the most.
And we end our classes, even the adult classes, so the classes are hands-on. You're cooking and then we end up... We finish with a community meal, so everyone in the class sits together to eat. So, that's... It's kind of a nice... I know that there have been some friendships made at our place and people have become friends and then they come back for more classes.
Nice. So, you have sewing classes too?
Yes.
That's something... My god, if my grandmother was a person or my mom was the go-to person for that, there's... Nobody does that today and that's just to sew a button.
Right.
You go to the dry cleaner, it's five bucks to get a button sewn.
It's expensive, even to hem.
Yeah.
If you're short, like.
My grandmother used to have all of her pants and stuff.
Yeah. So, those repairs and, again, just that cost-saving, making do of what we have and appreciating what we have.
Well, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings has a certificate for you today.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
So, today, we offer a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Vintage Kitchen in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this fourth day of September 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notaryanni, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That's a great idea.
Congratulations. I think it's great. Thanks.
We're all on red today, isn't that great?
Anybody want to go here?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That's a great idea.
Congratulations. I think it's great. Thanks.
We're all on red today, isn't that great?
Anybody want to go here?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now, thank you very much, because I think that's a... That's a business we absolutely need in our community, teaching people how to cook. We have Kirk Kimoni, Director of Convention and Visitor Center Bureau for overview on this great fall visitors guide. I think it's great. You got Halloween theme, you got Scranton, you got the pumpkins. I get an opportunity to go through it. Great.
I appreciate it.
Let's talk about it.
We do four-seasonal guides along with an annual guide that covers the whole year. This guide will... Our fall guide will cover September, October, and November. It talks about some of the great things we have going on for the fall season. It does highlight, as Commissioner Notaryanni mentioned, all of the markets and the taste of the season that we have with the cideries and the mills and the farmers markets that we have throughout the area in the fall. They are a very large attraction for us and do a great job of bringing people in. Talks about a lot of the different events that we have and again, outlines all of the attractions, the shopping, and our wonderful dining that we have and it's seasonal-specific. We're working very hard on our upcoming annual guide that will come out in January. And then we also are very proud to announce that the... We've signed the Lionel Train Convention for 2021. It'll be July 16 to the 21st in 2021 and bring in over 1,200 people to Lackawanna County to come to the Lionel Train Convention. It'll have public aspects to it, which we will promote, but it's a very large get for Lackawanna County and for our CVB. We went aggressively after this group. They're normally in major cities. Chicago, Seattle are two of the most recent cities they've been in and it was very nice to... We flew them in and one of the things that we heard before they made their decision was that they've never been in an area that treated them like they wanted them here so much. And that is a testament to the businesses and the attractions that we have in Lackawanna County. We did a tour for these folks and brought them around to all of our different attractions. And not only are we perfectly built for a train convention with Steamtown, the Trolley Museum, and a lot of our other things, but the Houdini Museum, the Coal Mine Tour, everywhere we brought them, they couldn't say enough about the people and how they were treated in Lackawanna County. And that goes a long way into being able to get these types of events here. So, we're very proud of landing that. It's a very large conference and convention that we'll be bringing to Lackawanna County.
That's fabulous. What a great... Great idea to bring the convention here.
and a lot of our other things, but the Houdini Museum, the Coal Mine Tour, everywhere we brought them, they couldn't say enough about the people and, and how they were treated in Lackawanna County. And that goes a long way into being able to get these types of events here. So we're very proud of landing that. It's a very large conference and convention that we'll be bringing to Lackawanna County.
That, that's fabulous. What a, what a great, great idea to bring the convention here. Like you said, you have Steam Town, we have our mine museum with the Trolley Museum, everything else. This is a perfect venue for them to come into Lackawanna County.
We're going after groups aggressively, smaller ones. We just signed a, for next year, a matchbook convention, folks that collect and trade the old matchbook covers and matchbooks.
I forgot about that.
And that'll be bringing in about 355 people to Lackawanna County in June, I'm sorry, August of 2020. So, you know, we're, we're out there constantly at different.
You're showcasing Lackawanna County.
Doing the, trying to just show people the great things there are to do in Lackawanna County.
The guide has a little bit of everything that we have in Lackawanna County. It really shows, showcases what we have going on. You and your staff are doing an incredible job.
Really appreciate it. Couldn't do it without our, we have a wonderful board and also the support that you all have shown us. Really appreciate that and we'll keep doing what we're doing.
Commissioner Cummings?
It's a great book. Who, who printed this?
We printed it at Scranton Printing and we, we put it together as a combination of my office and Sweet Advertising.
It is. It's a, it's a perfect book.
How did you, who, who got to, like, do they have to pay to go in here to advertise?
Well, we do have partners and partners are guaranteed to be in our guides and on our website and featured. You do not have to be a partner to show up there. We, we market Lackawanna County in the, in the way that we feel best showcases it, but if you're a partner with us, you're guaranteed inclusion.
What is that?
And we have all different levels of partnership. So for instance, a local, a Lackawanna County restaurant can partner with the C V B for a hundred dollars a year. And that would guarantee you a listing in our guide on our brand-new website. And then we do social media posts and many other ways to try to, to highlight the, the restaurants that we have in Lackawanna County as we see it as a major strength for us. Attractions are at a different level, so the, say the, the Rail Riders, for instance, or Live Nation is a higher rate than a local museum based on attendance. But the only way to be guaranteed inclusion is to be a partner.
So how do you, how would somebody that's watching this out there that wants to be a partner know how to do that?
If they go to our website at visit NEPA.org or contact us at 1-800-22-WELCOM, they can ask for Kurt Camoni and I will help them become a partner immediately. We're constantly working on that. I carry them with me and so does my staff anytime we're anywhere in Lackawanna County. We're trying to sign people up.
Let's talk about where the visitor center is right now, because we've moved.
135 Jefferson Avenue. Yes, we moved and it is beautiful.
Two anchor hotels there?
We do. We're right in between the Radisson and the Hilton. We couldn't be happier with the location. We get, we see more foot traffic, people coming in from the hotels, asking for information. But realistically, in this day and age, while our office is wonderful, our, our website and our online presence has become, you know, how folks interact with us and, and what they use as a visitor center. So it becomes even more important that we have a, a great presence there. So we've expanded our social media over the last two years. We've more than quadrupled the amount of followers we have on our, our social media. And again, we relaunched the website. And a website for something like us is never finished. We're constantly developing it, making, putting more things into it, diving deeper, adding events and pages to it. It's, it's a never-ending process, but we're very proud of it.
It's a project of work all the time.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Nateriani?
Kurt, you've just been doing a phenomenal job and keep up the good work.
I very much appreciate that.
I'm sure this will continue to grow.
I can't say enough about my staff and our board, though. I can't take really much credit at all, but I do appreciate it.
Yep. With that being said, how about our Rail Riders? Now, this is something, this matters to us. You know, you worked for the Rail Riders for numerous years. What does this mean to our community?
Well, Division Champions means more games. It means it's gonna bring people in from those other teams, hopefully, while attendance doesn't normally really kill it at, at the playoff games. There are no season tickets there. So we have to remember that even if they get 3,000 people into the ballpark, those are 3,000 fresh tickets that they're bringing in. And the economic impact to our area is very large. Those visiting teams stay at hotels, they eat food, that's more food and, and things that the Rail Riders will be buying. So it definitely impacts and brings, brings money into our area. And then the excitement and the local pride never hurts. You know, between that and next year, we're hosting the, the All-Star Game. There's a lot to be excited about on.
Which Kurt, isn't that a huge event? Like, that's like, do you have to be a special stadium to be chosen?
A couple of years ago, we had the, the AAA Championship, which is, is not anywhere near as large an event because it's two teams being represented and you don't even know until the week before what the teams are. With the AAA All-Star Game, you have representatives from every team in Major League Baseball. So whether you're an Orioles fan, a Yankees fan, a Red Sox fan, which we know in our area, we have an eclectic group of fans. We're predominantly Yankee fans, but we have a lot of Phillies fans followed up by Red Sox and Mets fans and Pirates fans. All of them will be able to see their future stars play at the stadium. And it's a multi-day event. The Home Run Derby is now almost as big an event as the, the game. It's a, it's a big deal for Lackawanna County to get that event. And again, it takes a long time for it to cycle through with all the other teams, but anytime we have an opportunity to hold something like that, we should jump all over it.
This is a big thing for Lackawanna County.
Very, very big. And it's nationally covered and televised.
Getting back to the Division Champs, now they're gonna go into best out of five.
They'll play best out of five starting in Durham.
They're on the road now. They head out now.
First two games in Durham. It'll be tough.
Last three back here with us.
As needed. Yes, sir. It's always tough to start out on the road with those first two. I, I've never agreed with the International League on how they do it, but hopefully they can get one out of two in, in Durham and come back and close it out here.
Beautiful.
It's always an exciting time here, especially for the people that put so much time in up on the mountain. They work long, long hours and they work very hard. And, and to be rewarded with the playoffs and hopefully a championship, it, it's a great way to finish it.
Yeah, this could be the second time in what, three years if it goes right, right?
Correct.
This would be great. It's great for the community. So please make sure everyone gets out there this coming week. There's gonna be three games back home against Durham. Cheer on our Rail Riders. Hopefully we'll get to.
And of course, the Fallatice Festival in Old Forge.
Oh, yeah. Fallatice is this week, yep.
They celebrate their culture with wonderful Italian food. I will be going for the first time, so I'm excited.
Oh, you're gonna love it. Great sauce. And that's, uh.
I can't wait.
That's Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yes, sir.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So make sure you get down to Old Forge and enjoy. It's a great weekend. It really is.
Thank you all.
Kurt, thank you for all the hard work and thank your staff.
Thank you.
Okay, opportunity for public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Ordinance Second Reading 19-0209.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an ordinance requiring the disposition of settlement monies received by the county to be directed to reimburse actual costs to the county and the remainder of the funds to be directed to provide for services for treatment of drug addiction and rehabilitation programs. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does have the authority to set the procedure for the management of the fiscal affairs of Lackawanna County pursuant to the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter and Pennsylvania County Code. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County authorized Lackawanna County to stand as a plaintiff in litigation against 14 pharmaceutical companies seeking reimbursement for the actual costs and other damages suffered by the county as a result of the pharmaceutical company's failure to warn of the highly addictive nature and dangers of the long-term use of prescription opioid medications. And whereas the Board of Commissioners believes it to be in the best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to enact the following legislation. Number one, all settlement monies realized by Lackawanna County, whether through settlement or court judgment, in civil case caption, Lackawanna County versus Purdue Pharma LPETAL, filed with the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County to term and number 2017 CV5156, shall be directed to reimburse the county for the actual costs to the county in addressing the opioid crisis and the remainder of the settlement proceeds being directed exclusively towards providing services for treatment of drug addiction and rehabilitation programs. Number two, the provisions of this ordinance are severable. If any section, clause, sentence, part or provision of this ordinance shall be determined to be illegal or invalid by any court or competent jurisdiction, shall this decision shall not impair or affect the remaining terms, sections and clauses of this ordinance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect 10 days after passage, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held today, September 4th, 2019.
Commissioner Cummings?
I just had one question. This is, this is making it so that future administrations can't just take this settlement and spend it elsewhere. But also, my question is, I think you said that it's for future treatment as well, not just to reimburse costs, but it also stated, am I correct in that or no?
That's correct. Yeah. It is, what this ordinance does is it limits the ability of future administration to just spend the money on general funding for fixing roads or something like that. In other words, the money would have to go towards reimbursing the county for costs we've already expended for, you know, addressing the opioid crisis to our social service agencies. And additionally, whatever funding, other funding would then go, it has to be dedicated towards use of treating additional funding in the future for opioid addiction.
So John, with this, you know my concerns. We discussed it this morning, so.
For the commissioners in general, you know, you see statewide, you have the Tobacco Fund, which is supposed to be used for specific purposes, ends up being used for other purposes, okay? As a suggestion in talking to Commissioner Cummings, you know, treatment for these problems is never going to end. It, it goes on and on and on. And I, I would just, we thought in talking about it that it might be more prudent, it's up to the commissioners, to limit it to just treatment going forward to deal with the problems, okay? The way that's worded, and this is my thoughts, it doesn't mean I'm 100% correct, but it, it almost could be used to plug, to plug a hole in a budget. And I don't know that that's what everybody wants, okay? I think it's been done statewide with the tobacco funds, similar things. So you may wish to consider to limit it for treatment. If the fund sits there, so what? It's a reserve. I mean, that, that's never been a bad thing, at least from the policy that I've understood with, with this Board of Commissioners, that that helps in, in many other ways in terms of financing and, and, and things like that. But given the nature of the problems, I, I don't see anything going away and I see continued expenses going forward. That's, that's, that was our thoughts anyway.
Yeah. The reason we drafted it that way for reimbursement is the fact that the lawsuit itself, Lackawanna County versus Purdue Pharmaceutical et al, seeks reimbursement for money we've already expended, okay? We spent millions of dollars already to our social service agencies addressing this. So the, the concern is there is that if we get a settlement, part of that settlement is reimbursement, X amount for reimbursement for what we've already spent and then additional funding for going forward. You know, if we limit it to just going forward, you know, it could interfere with our ability to settle it for past money that's already been settled up.
I understand that. I, I just, I just view it differently, that's all. And, and, you know, people could look at that and, and I, I don't see it as impacting the damages, but, but I'm, that's, I'm not handling that case either, okay? So, you know.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Respectfully. Those were the thoughts that we had when looking at, that's all.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And I, I appreciate my two fellow commissioners and all their support on what I've been working on with this and all of our departments and all the newly-created task forces and groups out there that have formed over the past three and a half, four years. I really do appreciate you all looking into this and moving forward with some of the things that, you know, needed to happen that weren't happening. So Commissioner Nateriani and Commissioner O'Malley, thank you for your support in, in this specific program that I've been trying to continually push. I do appreciate it. You know, we saw, one of the, you know, nice things I saw anyway is there was an opioid settlement and we actually won our first, our first battle, you know, with Purdue and, and a few other, Johnson and Johnson, I believe, was involved in that as well. So, you know, it, it is, it is something that needs to be looked into and, and we can win. And, you know, it might not happen in, in our, obviously it's not gonna happen in our time here as commissioners, but I hope it happens in my lifetime that I see a reimbursement coming to our coffers for all the costs that we've dedicated to this issue. And, you know, I'm hoping that in the future, we don't see as many people dying. And, and this is devastating to so many people. And, you know, I mean, I always talk about it, you know, with my family. I just, how many times can I say it? You know, it's just, it's just something that is a constant issue. Once it starts, it's just a never-ending saga. And it's a lifetime of therapies and treatment and, you know, setbacks and, you know, illnesses and, you know, literally, I mean, it's just, you wait for that phone call every single day. Which call are you going to get? Is it going to be a death or is it gonna be a sentence? You just never know. You just never know. And it's a constant battle, even after recovery. It's a constant battle, meetings and, you know, every day and constantly worried is, is there gonna be a setback? Even 20 years down the line, I've seen people that have, you know, fallen back and, you know, 20 years after the fact and they die. Because, you know, they haven't been doing all of this in years and then they take a, the last dose they remember and it's just way too much for their system and they OD. It's just, it's just a saga that I just, I pray every night and every day that it gets solved. And, you know, I thank you again for all of your help and thank you, Donnie and John, for all of your input and all the help that you've been in, in this. And it really means a lot to me. So thank you, everyone. I greatly appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. I do.
I think also Commissioner, the, the lawsuits, not just Lackawanna Counties, but the ones across the country, I think are starting to have an effect on doctors and hospitals and pharmaceuticals in prescribing these drugs, because now they're being held to account. Even, even pharmacies are getting sued now. And I think they're starting to ease back now on prescribing these opioids like they were doing before. They were handing them all a candy before. And I think now you're gonna see that trend changing with, with, you know, liability increasing for these companies.
I really hope so, Donnie. I really do, because it was disheartening for me, like I said, at C cap, to hear that they were still doing that. And, you know, a physician actually being there and arguing with me saying it should be offered after a, a C-section. And I thought, are you kidding? Like, do you wanna hook thumbs up on this stuff? Give me a break. And we were talking about infant, you know, infants being born with withdrawal symptoms. Like, it's just amazing how that they're discussing this. And, you know, it just, it's so frustrating. But yes, you're right. And they, I see it, it is changing. But it's really up to people to say no, you know? To know, because people trust their doctors. They don't wanna not trust their doctors. And that's what I used to always hear.
See, lawyers and courts aren't always bad. Sometimes we affect good changes.
Well, I thank you for the work you've done here, but I have to tell you, and just for a little bit of, you know, this isn't the only lawsuit that's coming. So just a little teaser there. But thank you, everyone, for all your help. And to the public, thank you for the work you're doing. And, you know, go get them, you know? Always, always stand up for your kids and yourself and, you know, don't let them talk you into doing a treatment that you don't feel comfortable with, ever. Thank you.
Commissioner Nateriani?
It's going where it should go and that's a great thing.
This hits, this hits home with just about, with everybody in this room. Everyone in this room knows someone who overdosed or has an addiction. And too many families have had their hearts torn out. Too many families have gone to cemeteries and buried people way before their time. And this whole lawsuit was about fighting the pharmaceutical companies. And like, the big thing is, we all, we, I know all of us up here in the desk and most of you in the audience grew up with, you know, I mean, we believe in whatever our doctors would say. That's the way it was. The doctor said, you went by that. And they were misled. And we're making sure that those pharmaceutical companies know about it. And, you know, being one of the first counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to come forward, we had the guts to do this because of the fact that there were so many people losing their lives in our community. So many loved ones were being lost and so many families were being devastated beyond belief with no chance of ever coming back. Because when you lose a loved one in the middle of your family, it's, you know, I mean, some people are able to come back, some people aren't. It's just the way it is. So, you know, we were talking about addiction, we were talking about recovery. And I'd like to have Doug Long come up and say a few words. Doug has been helping people for decades. His sobriety is over 30-some years old, I think, at this point. And this matters. And like you said, the big thing for us was the concern of making sure that the monies absolutely went back to where they're supposed to go.
Yes. I'm like, I'm liking it's a small atmosphere a little bit. It's really a tough topic for me. A lot of years on the firing lines. You know, I got asked to speak every five years. There's a world convention. My first one was in 1985 in Seattle, Washington. And in 20, year 2000, I got asked to speak in front of 80,000 people at Minneapolis-Toronto World Convention. And then 2020 now is Detroit. And I've never missed a world convention for a recovery group. And this here is probably my second biggest opportunity to speak in front of everybody here on how important it is, yes, being on the firing lines and watching what goes on. It's definitely gonna happen. It's gonna be like a tobacco settlement. I'm very much involved in it. I very much do a lot of reading on it. I'm very much dedicated in my life to it. Some of the tragedies we had in the county that I was involved in was the Frankie Benacci. He had five years before he got murdered. And I was a sponsor and been with him for five years since high school. So everyone's aware of me. Most people here are aware of me through dedicating that time with Frankie. Just recently, I was really involved with our Carolyn Janelle's, that would be Janelle's Restaurant. I was on, the phone with his mom this morning. So my first recovery house, it wasn't a sober house. When the trickling of opioid addiction, I did not know what it was. I'm sober 35 years. I'm sober since high school. I needed some tools. Who would ever believe that Doug, he'd be standing here at the county working as a mailman 35 years ago. I knew enough then, though. I needed some tools in a recovery program in 1978 when I picked up my first drug. Then again, it was rock and roll, Led Zeppelin, we all know those days, you know? And my family could speak openly about it. I didn't speak openly about it for years until I started getting involved with the knockout addiction for boxing. But during the Frankie Benacci, no one knew I was in recovery for 35 years. And so I don't wanna take anybody in a quick roundabout, but it's very, very personable to me. So what we're doing here is very, very important to the county. It's the most important thing we can do. And being on the cutting edge and having you guys be a part of it makes me so, feel so good today when I leave. About seven years ago, I had a rental property. It was empty. And a lot of kids were starting to trickle down with the opioid addiction. I was very unaware of how obsessed it is and how the addiction could lie and change somebody's human being, change the thoughts of a young, a young person and control their mind to robbery, to theft, to recovery. And I had no aware of it, you know? Then I was learning about the boxing and all of a sudden I'm getting TV stole at my house. There was no such thing as recovery houses. I was just trying to help somebody needing rent. And I learned and it started progressing with a lot of deaths for me and a lot of front lines with a lot of parents. And then what happened with Frankie, that's six years ago. And I know what recovery did for me. And I, I'm here for a positive story, you know? And no matter what happens, I know recovery is the most important thing we could talk about today. I know what it did for me. I needed some tools and I knew that as a young kid when I came in. It was just after high school. I had a drinking and drug problem, but I, I didn't have the tools from a guidance counselor, no sports or nothing. It's very important that I tell my story here, because the story we're telling here is gonna affect everyone, you know? And the recovery and what you're voting on and the time you're putting forth, it is so detrimental that this does get passed. And it would make me feel it would make me feel better. Because could you imagine me with bags of heroin or dealing with kids that are stealing? And it was a new obsession to me. And I couldn't wrap my hands around it. Because I'm in recovery and I think that everybody wants it. But this opioid addiction controls and changes your being. It causes our court systems. When I walk through, I'm the mailman. And I'll hear Judge Berace talk about treatment. This is our county that's doing a great job. The public defenders will be in the hallway at Central Court, that everybody's busy in their offices. But I hear them saying, "You need recovery. You need treatment." I hear it up at the public defender's office. I hear it at Central Court. And I'm proud that everybody is speaking on the same page here at the county. Because I see it right forehand. And I'm very proud of everybody. I'm proud of our public defenders. I'm proud of Judge Berace getting honored. And we are a great community. And we could be the whole leader of what's going on here for treatment. And, you know, there's a positive story. I spoke at Clearbrook and a gentleman was leaving the building when the front row of the seat. And I went out in the hallway in front of about 100 people at Clearbrook. And I brought this gentleman and I said, "Don't leave while I'm speaking." I said, "Let me finish my, my story. You may get one minute or one second out of it." And the other day, I've helped him now for seven years. And he was in one of my apartment houses for seven years. He's a Scranton cop now. And I'm staying in my deck the other day in Torts, Scranton. And the cop car pulls up. And it's Pat. I don't want to say his last name because I was told to forget repercussions. And I walked over there. And I was so honored. I said, "Pat, wow. This is a winning story for me. This is a success through recovery. Got one cop. He can offer assistance in his patrol car. He understands the other side of it." And I walked away back, stayed in my deck. Man, what a feeling that was. You know, I had maybe a little tad with God, with recovery, with our community, to change somebody's life. You know? He drives away in the cop car. And I had a little bit of that. You know, a little bit of what God gave to me in recovery. And, and don't get too emotional about it, but, you know, losing our Carolyn Janelle, I worked with him for two years. And everybody kind of knows the family from Old Forge. And I had hands on with him for two years. And it's tough with the families for me. Because, you know, I can't promise, we can't promise it's, it's, it's recovery. Why is it hitting me today? Okay, so, I talked to his mom this morning. I asked if I could talk about Ange Janelle, you know? And she said it would be wonderful to mention him. He had two years of recovery, relapsed very quickly, and was left to die in his pickup truck at a lake not far from here. And it's just so cruel, the whole situation of death, the way it's occurring with different people acting the way they are. It's all controlled by the opioids. And gets me furious to read the paper and have 38,000 pills, you know, from different local drugstores. And I don't want to chat off numbers because I know them by heart. Could you imagine me on the front lines, being frustrated? Damn right, I'm frustrated. It's ridiculous. And everyone knew it was coming. And I saw it for seven years coming. It was a trickle effect for me. Then it was floodgates opening up. And then everybody was understanding and getting on board, you know? But we're nipping in the bud. I'm very, very happy. And please understand, what recovery done for me is done, I just don't speak for me. Speak for a lot of local kids that have seven, eight years. Of course, when I came in, everybody was smoking cigarettes at the meeting. And I was the youngest in the area. I was only 19, turned 20, never had a legal drink, you know? And, but I knew what I needed. I needed tools. I needed support. And I needed recovery to be talked about and having a peer group around me. And that happens in recovery. And I'm very sorry. I got, emotional on it. It's national awareness for recovery. I'm involved in a recovery walk. If we could please talk about that. It's something that we can all get together in our community. I don't know why. Sorry. If we can get all together in our recovery. If, if, I'm sorry about that.
You're going to put a?
What's up?
Yeah.
If we could get involved, that we have a Scranton Recovery Walk this Sunday, September the 8th at noon time. And we're meeting at the new meeting hall. We're, it's a recovery hall by sheets. And we're going to walk down to our new recovery bank, which is awesome. You know, you can get information there. It's awareness. Awareness is huge. You know, it means a lot. The parents are grasping for straws some days. And to have the recovery walk and awareness is very important. Again, this was the second biggest moment in my life I know of to the county and speaking. I'm honored. I would have never thought 35 years ago, we would be doing and talking about getting help for recovery and allocating money. I can't be more honest than I was tonight or today with everybody. And I appreciate and honor the commissioners honoring our county and everything. We all speak on the same voice. Recovery does work. Please keep the awareness out there.
It's not a secret any longer, Doug. People are, everybody wants to save everybody else now at this point. It was always kept quiet. It was the obituary that just said, "Died." Now they're saying it. And they're talking about, and they're letting it be known. It was my daughter. It was my sister. It was my mom. It was my brother. It was my loved one. So, it's out there.
Well, it was a, it used
It wasn't for years.
It used to be known as a heroin crisis before I got here. Three months before I got here, if you go back and look at the articles, it was called the heroin crisis. And then we started the task force and changed it to opioid crisis, because that's what it is. And it's a manufactured crisis. You know, if they, maybe if they put a picture of a, a needle and heroin on the listing of OxyContin, people would understand what the hell we're talking about here. Because it's, it's a drug that is derived from heroin. Maybe if they understood that, they would realize that they're taking poison. You know, I mean, is your pain so severe that you want an addiction? Do you want to be addicted for the rest of your life on this pill? That's, that's the question. Is it, is it that much, is it that severe that you can take the risk of, you know, putting your family through, watching you deteriorate in front of their eyes? Having seizures and causing all kinds of havoc in your own life and watching you just destroy your own life? Is it worth that? Is, is that pill worth, is that pain worth all that? Because it's going to happen? That's, that's the question. And I'm, I'm so proud of you. Thank you for coming in.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Doug.
All right, thanks. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you so much.
Tony.
Tony, want to talk, speak, talk a little bit? I'll pull the mic over to you.
First of all, commissioners, I'd like to thank you personally. And on behalf of the residents of Lackawanna County for your support of the work of the Drug and Alcohol Office. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tony Coast. I'm deputy director. And I've been in the field of addiction's treatment now for 37 years. I began my career at the old Lackawanna County Detox Unit, when it was a county program. And I don't want to drag this out too much, but I want to piggyback on something my, my associate Kathy said earlier. She used the word underreporting. Everyone, the media has given a lot of attention to the opioid crisis. One fact that a lot of people don't know, to quantify it, in Lackawanna County, every week, we're losing two people between the ages of 25 and 35 due to either overdoses or drug-related causes. And to me, that's, that's shocking. You know, young people in the prime of life. It's, it's, we cannot afford to continue to do that. And I very much appreciate the fact that you're taking the initiative to pursue this settlement. We need the resources. In spite of all that we do, we're, we're just overwhelmed. And as far as the, I want to also compliment Attorney Frederickson. I've known Don a number of years. We were involved in, in the early years of the Drug Court and Act 53, Treatment of Minors. And a lot of people probably don't know that he has, he's, he's been on the front lines too in, in the fight. And couldn't be a better person to be working on this. I appreciate that.
Tony, what's the phone number if anybody needs any help? They're calling.
Okay. Our phone number's area code 570-963-6820. And we're, our, our offices are located on the fourth floor of this building here. We're
23 Wyoming Avenue.
That's correct. And we're available 24/7.
Tony, thank you. And thank you to your staff. And tell Barb, thank you, thank you for being here today.
Thank you again.
As everyone that's here today in the viewing audience can see that this was just, you know, the impact is so immense. And we just want to make sure that this money is used properly. And the next administration, administration after that, make sure that it's earmarked for exactly what it's for. To help save lives and heal the hearts of a lot of families that lost so much. Okay, ordinance 261, disposition of opioid settlement monies. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Naterianian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Resolutions 19-0219.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 288310 through 288802 inclusive totaling $2,697,869.75. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling $3,751,764.12.
Controller DiVillio?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
All invoices on today's payable list has, have been approved and audited by our Controller's Office. There are no invoices related to the Attorney General's probe of the Lackawanna County Prison, thankfully. There are a few invoices payable to United Neighborhood Centers of note. I'll point them out on page four. There's two United Neighborhood Center invoices through the Clerk of Judicial Records and the Workforce Development. Page nine, there are, there's a couple of checks for Area Agency on Aging and Human Services Department, Homeless Assistant Program, and Homeless Assistance Hotel Services. And on page 12, another check through Agent, Area Agency on Aging and Housing Justice Initiative. Not on the list, however, is one check that we've been holding for United Neighborhood Centers for $15,000 from back in June, that Attorney Frederickson might want to have added to the list for today's vote.
If, if the commissioners are in favor of authorizing that check to be released, I think there was some discussion among you if you want to add that or not.
That check, by the way, was for homeless supportive housing.
Yes.
Program.
Yeah, that wasn't through economic development though, right? It was through Area Agency on Aging.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not the agency itself that I'm looking at. It's the department it's coming from, just so you're aware. Because I've been looking at some issues that we've had in one of our departments and for over almost two years now. And that's, that's my concern. So, it doesn't really have to do with the agency itself.
Yes. So, if we're okay with authorizing that check, we need to make a motion to approve the current payables and including that $15,000 check that we've been holding. So, we just need to add that on as, as.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables and
And the addition, releasing the additional $15,000 check that's been held since June.
And releasing the $15,000 check that's been held from June. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Naterianian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0210.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a CWIS data sharing agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a CWIS Child Welfare Information Solution Data Sharing Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for an electronic data exchange with 67 Pennsylvania County children and youth agencies. And here to speak on this resolution is our Director of Human Services, Bill Browning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is in regard to our database. Every county is required to have a database that tracks various case management activities in child welfare. And we have to share that data with the state as far as various outcomes, such as reporting to the child, the child abuse hotline and things of that nature. This agreement ensures that we observe industry standard security protocols and that we protect the data accordingly.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning? Like to make a motion entering into the CWIS data sharing agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Naterianian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0211.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the Human Services Block Grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Human Services Block Grant HSBG in the amount of $11,173,672 for fiscal year 2019, 2020, as attached here too. Here to speak on this resolution is Bill Browning.
This is our annual allocation request to, to the state regarding services provided through human services such as mental health services, drug and alcohol services, homeless assistance services, and intellectual disability.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
I have a couple. I'm glad that you brought this to us today, Bill. And thank you for all of your work that you've been doing while I'm here. I do appreciate the, you know, because I know I ask a lot of questions. And I, I appreciate your patience with those questions and your, your timely responses. Some of the issues that came up when we were out at C cap that I, I've been concerned with is the medical marijuana. And one of the issues that we talked about with the Marijuana Task Force is foster parents having medical marijuana cards. And are they allowed to continue to be foster parents? So, this has been, you know, a very big issue in regards to your department. Just so you're aware, many, many conversations have happened out at, you know, our, our state level with the County Commissioners Association trying to figure out a way to get a, you know, work with this. And it's extremely difficult. So, are you seeing anything trickling down to your department in regards to those conversations and what you're going to do about these kind of issues?
We haven't had that, that issue arise yet. I'm sure it's just a matter of time, especially we do kinship, foster care as well.
Could you hang on one second? Could somebody please tell those people out in the hallway that we're having a meeting in here? Can you imagine? I'm sorry, Bill.
No, that's okay. So, one of the things that, if they have a legal prescription for that, we would have to ensure that they, they, their use is restricted, at least not around the children. We'd have to make sure it was locked up. But if it's legally prescribed, I don't know of any legal remedy that we'd have to prevent that usage.
But do you have federal funding coming to you?
We do have federal funding, foree funding for foster care.
So, how would you rectify that? Because it's a federal crime.
Understood. And I just, at this point, that's something we'd have to get clarification from the state. Because we have had no guidance from the state on it. We have asked numerous meetings for some, some clarity. And we haven't had anything yet.
There isn't any. That's, that's what I'm going to tell you. There is none. Because this was just thrown out there, you know, the way it was, this is, this is what we're going to have to deal with at the county level. And I'm not going to be here anymore. So, when I go out to C cap, you know, I mean, I don't know who's going to take over the conversations out there. But when I go out there, I'm consistently trying to follow up on what we're going to do in the different departments. This has become an issue. And yours is a huge one. That's been discussed, along with Area Agency on Aging. Do we allow the home care aides that I actually send to homes, do we allow them to have medical cards? So, if you have a staffing agency that comes in, are your nurses aides going to be, you know, going outside to have their medical marijuana while they're taking care of your parents or your uncle or your aunts? I mean, this is, this is an issue, another area you have to foresee, you have to watch over. So, do you have any idea what you do in that case?
It would be the same thing. We're looking for some guidance. And we would just have to approach it as we, for instance, home care, we'd have to approach it as any, any other medication. If, if they appear to be under the influence, if they're appear to have any kind of deficit based on that, we'd have to treat it individually. But again, we have no guidance from the state. And I know that, that our organizations, which are sister organizations, are subsidiaries of C cap, PCY, and we have yet to receive any clarification. Sure, I, a foster care funding, for instance, is significant from federal standpoint, especially because of the poverty level in Lackawanna County. We have one of the highest, it's called penetration rates, which means that the federal participation is very high compared to some other, other counties. So, it is a real issue.
Well, I mean, I, I would hope that, you know, the public is made aware of this because this is something that, that is not being talked about. And it's a major concern. And it's, it's been argued back and forth at the legislative level, out at the state, as well as with local county commissioners at our C cap. well as with local county off Commissioners at our CCAP meetings because of people, you know, they are very upset, you know. And if I had a nurse's aide coming in to take care of one of my family members, I certainly wouldn't want them going out and getting high and then coming back and take care of my my loved one. But at the same token, even if they didn't do that and they had that card, they could be a positive after thirty days of, you know, taking the drug. It stays in your system for up to thirty days if you only did it once. But obviously, it would be in their system all the time if they had the card. So, you know, this is an issue that really needs to be addressed. And, you know, they say, well, oh, well, these, you know, oxycontin's are illegal. Yeah, but when you take oxycontin, one pill, you know, every six to eight hours, you're not walking. I mean, I I have never taken one, I have to admit. However, I can't, I mean, I've seen people as a nurse, I've seen them on these drugs as as prescribed, and they're not walking around stoned. Okay, let's just be honest. Not the same thing. Okay? You know, I know that there's alcoholics that are, you know, they they do have the ability to work through sometimes, I guess. You know, I've never seen a functioning alcoholic at the worksite that I know of. Maybe I have, and I didn't know it. I don't know. But, you know, I just think that this is something that our state did without even considering the ramifications to the counties and how we're supposed to deal with this, let alone in the sheriff's office and as employers and taking care of children and youth and our elderly population and our veterans. I mean, how are we supposed to deal with all this? And then if they become positive as employees, they have to be fired. That's our policy. So they're let go, period. They're positive. And they are not covered by anything because it's a federal crime. It's just a federal crime to have it in your system or to have it on your possession. And you can't work if you're positive. And that's my policy at my place. I will, you know, regardless of the drug that's in your system, you can't work for me because I won't have you taking care of any of my clients while you're on any kind of drug, period. That's it. So I just hope for your sake and for the county's sake that we can come to some kind of resolutions on this. And, you know, I mean, everyone knows my thoughts. I don't believe it should have been legal to begin with, but, you know, that's just me. And, you know, I hope that they come to a resolution. And thank you for all your work. It's a lot of work here, folks, that he's done. So great job, and I'm really proud of of all the work you've done, Bill. You're a testament to to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the Human Service Block Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nine dash zero two one two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into a service agreement with Chester County. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a purchase of service agreement with Chester County for FY nineteen dash twenty for the purchase of detention beds for juveniles. Here to speak once again on this resolution is Bill Browning.
This contract allows us to purchase a detention space or detention bed if we need it. In Chester County, the the number of detention facilities are shrinking, so we maintain these contracts as a backup in case we're unable to, in case we're maxed out at some of the other facilities where we have beds pre-purchased.
Okay. Like to make a motion entering into a service agreement with Chester County. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. I have a question. Just so you're, I did ask, there's no bed holds, right?
No, there's no bed holds in Chester.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Nineteen dash zero two one three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is.
Virginia Toronto.
This is entering into an agreement.
Hey, Virginia.
For the employment advancement and retention of network project. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the administration and operation of an Employment Advancement and Retention Network, EARM, project, providing career and employment services to PA Department of Human Services customers in accordance with EARN program policies and procedures to be effective July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And here to speak on this resolution is the Workforce Development Board Director, Virginia Toronto.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. The Er, the Employment Advancement and and Retention Network, or what we call EARN project, is a project, we received a grant from the Department of Public Welfare to provide extensive case management and job readiness training to individuals that are receiving public welfare that are not quite ready to enter the job market. The way we handle this is we are required by law to procure our services so that we did follow the county procedure. We advertised in the Scranton Times. It was open for approximately three weeks. Once the proposals are received, then they are they received in the Commissioner's Office to Ms. Pantuso. Then they are opened in the Economic Development Office for to ensure that everything is proper and that the person that is applying is eligible to apply. Then they, in this case with EARN, we only received one proposal, so it was reviewed by the Executive Committee of the Workforce Development Board, and then it was ratified, and it was approved, and then it was ratified by the full board at their June meeting. I can say that EDSI has held this contract for us for the past two years, and they have met all of their performance requirements.
Okay, does the Board have any questions?
No, I'd like to just commend Virginia again on all of your work because I have stacks of research in my office that she graciously handed over to me on all the things that went into coming up with this so that she can make it appropriately done. And I do appreciate your work and.
Thank you.
All that you've done. Thank you.
Any other questions? Like to make a motion entering into an agreement for the Employment Advancement and Retention for the Network Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two one four.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an agreement with ResCare Incorporated. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with ResCare Incorporated, DBA Bright Spring Health Services for the administration and operation of a Lackawanna County Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, grant to provide comprehensive employment and training services to youth, young adult customers to be effective July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Here to speak on the resolution is Virginia once again.
Thank you. This is a little bit different. This is Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds that flow down from the federal government through the states and then out to local workforce development areas.
Cam, what's your issue?
Again, the with the youth funds, we will serve youth between the ages of twelve and twenty-four years of age. We provide occupational skills training if needed. We can provide on-the-job training, and that is where we would reimburse an employer up to fifty percent of someone's wage to hire them over a contracted period. And with youth, we can also provide work experience for them to help them build a resume. We followed, again, we are mandated by law to procure these services. We followed the same request for proposal procedure. One thing that was a little bit different with these funds is we did receive two proposals. So there's another step involved. After the proposals are opened, they go before a Procurement Review Subcommittee of the Workforce Development Board. And this committee reads the proposals. They rate them. They they review them. They rank them. They rate them. Then they make a decision, and they recommend for approval to the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee reviews all of the rankings and the reviews, and then they make a decision. And the Executive Committee, once that's made, it was ratified again for ResCare Workforce Services for approval by the full board.
Okay, does the Board have any questions for Virginia? Like to make a motion entering into an agreement with ResCare Inc. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two one five.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the administration and operation of a Lackawanna County Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIOA, grant to provide comprehensive employment and training services to adult and dislocated worker customers to be effective July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Here to speak once again, Virginia Toronto.
Thank you. This mirrors the youth funding. This is our funding for to serve economically disadvantaged adults and dislocated workers here in Lackawanna County. Follows the exact same procedure, request for proposal procedure. Again, with this, we received two proposals. So it went before the Procurement Review Committee prior to going to the Executive Committee, and they made their recommendation for EDSI. And I I didn't say this before. ResCare last time had our has had our contract for two years for youth, and they hit all of their performance. And again, with EDSI, they've held our Adult DW contract for two the past two years and have met all of their performance requirements.
Great. Okay, does the Board have any questions? Like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Educational Data Systems Inc. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks, Virginia. Thank you. Nineteen dash zero two one six.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an online data processing service agreement with Infocom Corporation. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a renewal of an online data processing service agreement with Infocom Corporation on behalf of the Lackawanna County Orphans Court, Marriage License Bureau, Register of Wills, and Clerk of Judicial Records Civil. Monthly service fee of three thousand four hundred fifty dollars to be funded by the Lackawanna County Records Improvement Committee. Agreement is for one year and shall automatically renew every month. And here to speak on this resolution is Register of Wills and Clerk of Orphans Court, Frank Kowaleski, along with Maury Kelly.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning, everyone. This is a service agreement for the online, free to the public web. All of our records from the Register of Wills, the Orphans Court, along with Maury Kelly's.
Civil Division.
Civil Division. Records are online. This is a renewable contract that we've had, I believe, since two thousand five when we went online with all of the records. The Recorder of Deeds has some records still out there with this on this contract.
It's a great service to the public.
Great service.
It's it's a public service.
Yeah, Commissioner, I would just like to say I've been a practitioner of the law for twenty-some years, and all the counties have records somewhat available. Most of them use another corporation I'm not going to mention. But our our system is by far the best, I think, in the state. Other other, they're freely accessible. You can go on, pull up your deed. You can go on, pull up court records. If you have a case pending before the court, it's all free. It's accessible to the public. The other corporation, the counties that use the corporation, you got to pay to even look at the documents. It's ridiculous. But I think we offer a great service, and I think it's a great program that you guys have done, and you're commendable for.
And we continue. Maury and myself continue to update our records. They're updated daily along with going back and putting older records on file. So it is a good service. It is, again, free to the public. It's paid out of, it doesn't come out of the General Fund of the county. It comes out of a user's fee from the Recorder of Deeds that is mandate mandated by the statute. So for every deed that's recorded, we get five dollars. And we are very cautious what we do with our five dollars. And it has been beneficial to the taxpayers, you know, because it's it's a great service and people that.
We just heard Don's endorsement.
Thank you.
Does the Board have any questions? Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an online data processing service agreement with Infocom Corporation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Nineteen dash zero two two two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an appointment to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Attorney Brenda Kobel from music term to begin immediately and expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Can I have a motion for the appointment to the Heritage Valley Authority? I'd like to motion. Give a second.
Yeah, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two two three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an appointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Rosemarie Karati from Scott Township to fill the unexpired term of Attorney Kobel, which expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment for the Convention Center Visitors Bureau. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two one seven.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the interior demolition and restoration of the first floor of the Bank Towers Building to Sean Byrne Construction, the lowest and most responsible bidder, at twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. Here to speak on this motion is Joe Wexler.
Good morning, Commissioners. Working with Kevin Shaughnessy, we conducted a walk-through through the SLDHA area. We had seven vendors attend the walk-through. Response was only by one vendor, Sean Byrne Construction, for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Okay, does the Board have any questions?
How come Americans couldn't take all that stuff down?
We met with Kevin Shaughnessy on site with that, his maintenance crew, the complexity of removing the electrical panels and and electric wiring and so forth in there. He couldn't handle it. He said it was too big of a job for his crew to do.
What about the walls and stuff done?
Yeah, they got to take down the walls, but there's all wiring in that within the walls. Everything has been like wired over there. So it needs to be. It was beyond his his men's ability, he said.
It has to be put back to the way it was before.
After you start back to the way it was, yeah, yeah. Most of it's demolition, but he just didn't wasn't comfortable using his men doing it. He didn't think that they were up to be able to do it, so. Within the timeframe allotted also, so.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to award the interior demolition and restoration of first floor of the Bank Tower Building by Sean Byrne Construction, the lowest, most responsible bidder, of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two one eight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to authorize Nassau Real Estate to list for sale the properties. Tax map two-two zero-two-zero-one-zero-zero-seven off Lehigh Road. It's seven point forty-nine acres. Tax map number two-two zero-zero-two-zero-one-zero-zero-seven oh-one, Lehigh Road, sixty-six point one acres. Two-two zero-zero-four-zero-two-zero-zero-two, Lehigh Road, eighty point seventy-five acres. Two-two eight-zero-one-zero-one-zero-two-three, Freetown Road, eight point zero-eight acres. One-seven zero-zero-four-zero-five-zero-zero-one, Front Street, fifty-one point one-two acres. One-eight one-oh-five zero-one-zero-zero-one, Smith Street, nineteen point oh-eight acres. One, this tax number, one-eight zero-zero-two-zero-three-zero-zero-four-zero, Front Street and Simmerson Road, one point five-one acres. Two-one-three zero-four-zero-two-zero-zero-five, Lehigh Road, thirty point forty acres. Two-two one zero-three-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-three-oh-one off Lehigh Road, thirty point four forty acres. One-eight one-oh-five zero-one-zero-zero-zero-one, SR four thirty-five Commercial Parcel, two point five-four acres.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions?
Donnie, this is just to list them. This is not to sell them.
That's correct. This is to list them, Commissioner. Yeah, they would have to get offers, and they have to come back to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can can these, like, this is acreage. Can any of this be subdivided, or if it can be, or no? It's as-is?
Well, we're selling it as-is. I mean, if a developer wanted to sub, I don't think the county would go to the expense of subdividing it. But if a developer wanted to subdivide it, that would be up to them.
What if, you know, Joe Schmoll comes up and says, you know what? I like this block area here. Can you deduct that from the acreage if it's not sold? It could be one acre.
That would probably have to be between the person that bought it.
Well, no, I think she's saying if they come to the county, I mean.
They come to the county and ask, I want to buy this acre.
They would have to be approved by you guys. I mean, you know, that's an expense, though. That would have to be an expense that, you know, the county would want to absorb that or not.
Why would it be an expense?
Because you'd have to.
Because you still have to, we would have to have it surveyed, and then we would have to have maps drawn up, and then we'd have to get approval from the local zoning board or our planning commission to to approve it. So, you know, there's expense with that, so.
Well, where are they going to be? Are we going to be advertising these? Are we gonna be advertising these, like, on our website?
I believe so. Well, I believe Nassar's gonna advertise them there.
But are we also gonna do it? I mean, we should have it on our website, right?
We can put a connector, I suppose, onto our website, or if you can, a link, yeah, we can put a link on, yeah.
Yeah, let's get rid of, we're trying to sell property, so, yeah. Let's advertise what we can.
Very good, yeah. And these properties were all appraised, I think it was last year, by Nassar. We, we had them appraise them all, so we have an appraised value on them.
Do we ever figure out why we purchased them to begin with?
This was that large transaction under two--
Some of them were, I mean, yeah, these, these are properties acquired over decades. I mean, you know, some of them were acquired in a purchase years ago. Other ones were acquired, just, we just had them in our, in our listing for many years.
If the appraisals were done that long ago, and like you said, why, why are they, why is it just appearing now? Any idea?
I don't know, Commissioner.
Because it was brought to our attention by economic development about a year ago. That's what it was. It was actually stumbled upon. It was something that was, that was, yeah. They, we weren't assured, that's why it took--
The county actually owns a lot of properties throughout the county we have there. A lot of them are scrub lands and things that aren't really worth a lot, but, you know, some of them may have some value, so.
Not us, but somebody else, they might be.
Or the person that might be living next door to us.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Nassar Real Estate to list or sale properties. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodewannett, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. The good news about that RFP for renovating the first floor of Bank Towers, the bid that came in at $29,954 was approximately one-third of 321 Development LP's estimate of what they thought it would cost, being $88,456. That's the, the figure they quoted in their lawsuit. So I think it's not gonna be as bad as you think. It's not free, but on the other hand, it's not the almost $90,000 that the owner was estimating. So I thought that was very good news. I was there at the bid opening, so.
That doesn't include the carpet removal, though, right? That's the problem.
No.
But, but yes, you're right.
Carpet removal can't be that much. And speaking of money, my favorite subject, I still would like to know what the current figure is for the cost of this new government center. And I'm interested in a concrete number, not just a generalization. I understand that expenditures, invoices, and revenues will still be coming in, so the, the number is going to fluctuate. But I think the taxpayers, we're almost nine months into the, this new year for the government center. We should have some kind of feel for what that number is. Do we know what it might be, a ballpark figure?
I'll try to get you some kind of a, a close number to next week's meeting, my next time open.
And with regard to that question, Attorney Fredrickson, I recall you saying that probably no later than September, we were gonna transfer 200 Adams Avenue and get it back on the tax rolls. Do we have any status on that?
Yeah, the, it's scheduled to close on September 30th is the closing date.
Good. Because I would hate to see that drag out into the new year, and then we lose all tax revenue for next year. Okay, I mean, would've been nice if we could've done this last December, and we would've had, we had it on the tax rolls for this year, but it's understandable, it dragged, and you could've seen that.
You wouldn't, we wouldn't have been able to, it was just impossible.
Yeah, but it'd be, I, I would hate to see it drag through till 1 January. That would be awful. So that's good news if that, that gets wrapped up by the end of the year, or by the end of the month. And more news on money. Recently, you probably saw in the news that former prison guard Paul Voglino, the charges were dropped, and he has expressed a desire to get his job back. My understanding is, when he was charged, he was terminated. And now that the charges have been dropped, and he's seeking to be reinstated, re-instituted as a guard at the prison, my question is, is he going to be entitled to back pay? And if so, how much? Because he was terminated, and the charges have subsequently been dropped, so he's guilty of nothing.
But he was charged.
So--
This is a personnel matter, right, Donnie?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a personnel matter, we want to discuss, but I mean, there's a reason that we pay the guards when they were not charged, that we suspended, but, you know, it's--
Yeah, could you explain the difference on that, just a little?
Well, we had term, we made a, the Board of Commissioners made a decision to terminate the guards once they were charged, but--
Right.
You know, in this case, now Mr. Voglino, the charges were dropped against him, so he's gonna apply for his job back, and I'm sure he's gonna apply for back pay. And we'll have to process that once we receive the request. We haven't received a formal request from him or his attorney yet.
Is there a possibility he might be entitled to back pay?
No.
Nope?
Not that I saw, and that's why we did it that way.
There, there is a possibility, yes.
There is a possibility.
I think it's personnel at this time.
We'll wait till we get, receive some kind of request.
Okay. We'll be watching, we'll be watching, because that could be a pretty piece of change there. And there was another ex-prison guard, George McHale. Looked back in my files, and there was an article on April 5th. He got his job back. I believe he was acquitted, and he was put on administrative leave. Okay? Is he back to work, does anybody know?
That's a personnel matter, again, I don't know that we should discuss that in public.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is, if he's, if, if he were to be on administrative leave for any length of time, somebody would have to be either pulling overtime or somehow covering his, his duty responsibilities, and that's extra money. So I'd be curious about that. The bottom line is, back in February, the Times Tribune published an article about the cost of the fiscal fallout, shall we say, of this prison investigation. And on the salary side, they quoted a figure of $761,833 as of January 31st. And I would very much like to know what that figure is today. Okay? And I understand, you know, that we have some shoes to drop, but I suspect by the end of the year, that figure is gonna be substantially higher. So I will keep asking the question, what is the current salary figure? And I did take a bathroom break about 11 o'clock, so, Gary, I assume there's no change to the legal fees?
That's right, Joan.
Oh, good, good. At least we got that going for us. Okay. And speaking of jobs, I did a write-to-know request with all three taxing authorities, and I wanted to know what each taxing authority's hiring policy was. Because, you know, looking at this issue of the prison guards and everything else, and for better or worse, I'm a religious reader of the newspaper, have not much else to do in the mornings, anyway. And one of the things I looked at is the classifieds, because I always look at the legals. And so I kind of browse through the classifieds, see if there's something that might interest my nephew, for him to move up the career chain. Not that I'm looking for another job. I paid my dues when I was a young woman, and I'm happily retired, and I ain't going back to work for anybody at any, at any salary. However, I look back on my experiences as a young graduate, after I got out of college, and for better or for worse, I went off to graduate school and still couldn't get a job in the local area. Certainly had no connections, one way or the other, in my family. So I did something radical and went into the Army. And by the grace of God, it was a good choice for me. I mean, how else can you retire at 48 with the pension and health care? Okay? And I was able to come home and take care of my mother. And that's the upside. But the downside was, my parents and my sister needed my support, both physically and financially, well before my retirement. And I wasn't in the area, because when you're in the military, you're gone, and you just can't go home when you want to. When I say I was gone, remember, I was overseas for 12 and a half years. And my father lost his job in 1978, and my sister became very ill in 1988, and so I didn't retire until 1998. So it bothers me, you know, that I was gone from the scene. I would've preferred to have had much lesser pay and lesser benefits, but been here when my family needed me. Okay? But I wasn't. So I look at the three taxing authorities, and what you have to keep in mind is that the salaries of all government employers are paid by taxpayers. Myself, my parents, my sisters, and a whole lot of other people, both in the city and in the county. Therefore, government positions, other than the elected positions, like you people fill and you run for office, but the non-elected positions should be open to all qualified people. Okay? That means both people currently employed and moving laterally or up or down in the system, as well as all other people who qualify, who, you know, can apply. But you can't apply for a vacancy unless you know it exists. And for this reason, I did a write-to-know to get all three hiring policies. And I, this short blurb is the county's hiring policy. Short enough that I can read it to you. The county is an equal opportunity employer. When a vacancy occurs, the position may be, not will be, shall be, must be, may be advertised in the newspaper or on the website, or both. The department head and HR, human resources, review all the applications received. Many applications are dropped off unsolicited on a daily basis, and they are also reviewed. Interviews are then scheduled with the most qualified candidates who meet the job's requirements and/or specifications. For vacancies in unionized positions, collective bargaining, bargaining agreement terms are followed in filling the internal positions. Okay? I'm not quite sure what that last sentence means, that filling a unionized position, collective bargaining supersedes everything else, I'm not quite sure. You'd have to look at the contract.
It's bumping, bumping.
It's posted.
People can bump other people, and it's crazy.
But at any rate, my philosophy is, if it's a taxpayer's funded salary, it should be open to every qualified taxpayer.
It can't be, because you'll be, you'll just get, I'm gonna wait and let Speaker and Commissioner's business--
Whatever. Okay, let me just finish my philosophy on this. If there's, I mean, we're excluding the elected positions, that's a whole different can of worms. But, you know, I, I don't get the sensing that we aggressively advertise vacancies as they come up, whether they're unionized or not. Okay? Now, when Virginia Torano was up here, she did talk about the fact that her position was advertised, and that was a good thing to hear. But like I said, I religiously read the newspaper, and I'll see advertisements from other counties, for various county positions. I see a lot of school district advertisements, other than the Scranton School District, for this math teacher, or that principal, or whatever. Okay? And, you know, that bothers me, because my life turned out well. Going into the military was the best stupid thing I ever did. Okay? And it's probably God doing it for me. So I have no regrets about that. But I would like the younger generations to have the opportunities that I did not have. I would like them, if they are qualified and interested in staying in the, in the local area, being able to apply for vacancies as they come up. You know as well as I do that if you compare most of the government opportunities here against the private sector, the government pays pretty well and offers a good benefits package. Okay? So, you know, given two people with, you know, equal credentials, you know, everyone should have the opportunity to compete. Now, maybe on the union side, there, there is some kind of issue with bumping up and, you know, internal. But I'm pretty tired of hearing about people who get positions because of the grapevine. Okay? And I just want the best qualified person to get it, all things being equal. And I think one of the things that would help is if you aggressively advertise. And I know you're not all in favor of the Times Tribune, but I will tell you that a lot, lot of job seekers, rather than go to 20 websites, will check out, you know, the classifieds in the Times Tribune, especially the Sunday edition, looking to see what kind of vacancies are there. And it's just, it's a sore point with me. Okay? Because I would hope that younger generations don't have to do something, like leave the area and join the military, because they can't find work at home, even though they're qualified. When I was in the Scranton School District as a kid, you know what they used to tell us? To get a good job, get a good education. Well, I got a darn good education. Okay? I have five degrees today. But I'm telling you, as I was going up and graduating, you know, first from high school, then from college, I couldn't even get interviewed, let alone get a position. So just keep that in the back of your head, because I'm gonna revisit this as I get the responses from the other taxing authorities. Also, there was an op-ed in the Times Tribune on August 27th about having the county collect the city's delinquent taxes and fees. Is that still a viable option? Is anybody talking about that?
I'll talk about it under Commissioner's business.
Okay. And also, if you can mention it, one you know, and maybe you have it already, any information on the scheduling of public meetings on the 2020 budget? When and where?
Nothing yet.
Okay, when you have that, make sure you let us know.
It's public to everyone. It's for everyone. Everyone gets invited.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Is everybody done talking?
Yeah, there's no one else here.
Well, Joan, the prison investigation, as I said numerous times, time and time and time again, you know, we aren't in charge of that, somebody else is, so we're not dragging our feet on that. Longer that takes, the longer these people get paid. I did want to congratulate you on your interview with the, for the position at City Council. You did an excellent job, and I would encourage anybody that hasn't seen it to go and watch her interview. She did an excellent job, and dare I say, you probably know more than everyone that was up at that day. So why they didn't pick you, I don't know, but probably they were afraid to. You should've been picked, or Marie, I believe.
They need an extra lawyer these next couple of months.
Oh, did they pick a lawyer? I, I don't, I, I just knew you didn't get it. I didn't know who they picked, though, so.
They need that extra lawyer.
Yeah, they may. Well, congratulations, you did a great job. So I just wanted to let you know. And as far as the ads in the paper for jobs, trust me, I've been, it's, it's very difficult. There's so many different factions, and I'll give you one, one example. The Sheriff's Department. The sheriff is an elected official. Now, we can't tell him how to go about advertising for his staff, and he does not want to advertise for his staff. He wants to utilize the two graduating classes that come out every year, and prefers to do it that way. What do we do? Can't do anything. He's an elected official. He can run that department the way he wants to run it. There's, you know, different row offices that they decide in the end how they're going to go about, regardless of what, you know, that's their department, they're elected. They could do what they want in that department. We get this 1620 rights, 1620 rights, that's all I ever hear is about 1620 rights. You know, and they don't even have to accept what other elected officials did. They can just wipe that policy out and restart it, because they're an elected official and they have 1620 rights. So it's not as easy as everybody thinks when you're dealing with county business. There's all different factions. And, you know, I run up against brick walls all the time. It's frustrating. It's very frustrating. You know, ads, I talked about it in the actual debates, how we do the, what our policy is, but we have, you know, people apply for jobs here every single day. I mean, I can't say how many applicants come in every day, but I can guarantee you that on a weekly basis, we get at least 50 applications in, in the HR department. It's just a constant, everybody's coming in, filling in applications, and they're young people, and they do get positions here. So if the department head, if-- So, if the department head, if HR comes in and hands them, well, look, we have, you know, look through the applicants that we got for your specific department, and let us know if there's anybody that, you know, you like. They look through them, and they find, you know, a couple that they want to interview, or they interview all of them. They might find someone in that pile. If they don't, then they go to, you know, the ones that are advertising, or they, they do advertise, and try and get people that way. I mean, Kurt Kimoni was in here. He got his job. Fran, how many did we have? 99 applicants we advertised for that, right?
Yes, ma'am. We advertised worldwide.
And that was for the visitors bureau?
Yes, ma'am.
And there was 99 applicants, right? Yeah. So, I mean, there's, it just depends on, you know, which office it is, and if, basically, if our hands aren't tied to do it. So, that's why it has to be a generic policy, like you read. Now, with the unions, they have their own set of rules. You gotta read their contract to see what exactly, you know, you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do, and that ties our hands, too. You know, one of the good things that I think we got done with the unions is part-time workers. For, you know, Commissioner O'Malley worked on it. I mean, I've been asking for 60 of them since I started for the prison, but he, he got it done. I mean, he's got it started, so, you know, but it was because I kept complaining. And, you know, I mean, we have gotten, we have gotten some things done, so, you know, it's just different aspects, but that's kind of a long version of it. I'm trying to shorten it for you, but there's all different kinds of scenarios that can happen as to why it doesn't get advertised. So, I guess the best thing would be to look at who you're questioning that got hired, and see what happened in that specific area, and why, why it occurred that way. And some answers you're not gonna like, and some you will. I, I've run into it all the time. I think the best thing for you to ask for is, who approved it? Yeah, who proved that hire? There you go. There's your answer. Go talk to them and ask them why. Why'd you approve that? The op-ed, you can deal with. I, I don't even, but, you know, I don't even know what she's talking about in an op-ed, so that was out there. You said you were gonna talk about it, anyway, so. I do want to make sure that young people are applying for jobs and get, you know, I definitely want the most qualified. I think we all do. You know, I, I just hope that that continues to happen, but there are some I disagree with, and I make my, my points known. I want to, again, thank the Commissioners on their support on the opioid issues. There's gonna be more coming that I did talk with Commissioner O'Malley about. I still have some more things I have to look into, and maybe we can even go further on, on that front, that, things that I'd like to see happen. And, you know, I, I appreciate the, the support of the public in, in regards to all that we're doing as well. And, you know, I hope to see them out supporting our, when is this? September 8th?
Uh, yeah, is this September 8th?
Well, you can hold it up.
Sure. Actually, Doug showed it already.
September 8th, and I'm glad to see that we're getting rid of those properties that, that we didn't really need. I don't know why we had them to begin with. You know, I just, there's a lot of things that I, we found here that we weren't sure why they occurred, but they did. And, you know, I hope everybody had a great summer, and I hope the kids have a great day back to school. I don't know. I know I used to be excited about going back to school, but I don't know if they are today. At least, I got bored of the summer already. But, and thanks, Joan, for always coming in and asking us such great questions. Have a good day.
Commissioner Terry?
I'm good.
Joan, what was that last question you were asking? The very last one? The last one, I said it was the answer.
About your meetings?
No, 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 the one before that.
On collecting taxes.
About the city--
Oh, yeah. Joan, just like the viewing audience, they know, like, I met with Ron Kolodziewski three or four years ago, or even further back, even when he was the minority, and we talked about this forever. And we have an understanding now why we couldn't actually have that opportunity with the city. We are, they are trying to set up a meeting, hopefully next couple of weeks, with the administration, and that's basically where we're at with that. Okay, let me get to the, this past weekend was great. The weather was fabulous. 44th Annual LaFesta Italiano. Congratulations to the committee. They did an incredible job. Our new sidewalks, great, no, no holes, no nothing, brand new. Great opportunity for everyone to go out and enjoy the courthouse, and the weather was incredible, with a beautiful breeze. And, like I said, congratulations to the committee, LaFesta, and Chris DiMatio, and to our staff for Buildings and Grounds. Kevin Shaughnessy and his staff did an incredible job making sure that everything was clean, and all the other volunteers that are involved. Also, this coming Saturday is the Lackawanna County Cross Country Invitational, McDade Park, 9:00 AM. There's five graces, five races, two freshman race, one varsity B, and two varsity races. Great races. I think they go up until around 11:30, when they start to give out the awards. Please come on out. Great to support the kids. And this is like, this is 20-some districts that are involved, like, from New York, all over the place. It's amazing. September 11th, McDade Park, 8:00 AM. We're gonna be having the 9/11 memorial service. Please come on back. It's, it's a quick service, because it's in the morning, so people are able to come out. I think it's on, I think that's, I think that's a Wednesday, I think. So, please come on back. It's at McDade Park, right below the Sleigh Riding Hill. September 13th, Lackawanna County Commissioners having their blood drive here, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the, the Pub Store. Please come to 123 Wyoming Avenue. September 14th, this is great, for all the parents out there, bring your kids up to emergency services. We're gonna be having Heroes Day, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Meet law enforcement, EMTs, firemen, free hot dogs, drinks, coloring books, you name it, they have it. It's a great day. It's just great for the children to get to know who are the people that are out there on the front lines, protecting and saving us every day. September 20th, we're gonna be having our Senior Health Fair at PNC Field. Come on up, see PNC Field, hopefully home of the rail riders and the champions of this year, if everything keeps going the right way. 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, I think we're gonna have, was it Hoagies? What do we usually have?
Uh, we usually have some kind of, of lunch for--
We have some kind of lunch for the seniors.